A lot of the other committee meetings today is because of staff being able to do extra duties for us.
I just brought it up for discussion. I mean, I don't keep it in mind, you know.
Picking up the audio.
Please.
Oh, it's on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kristy.
May I, maybe making a few days when it's lighter out in the evening, something maybe further ahead to trial out would be my compromise there so that that gives our clerk time to prepare. Again, that was just a soft compromise.
Well, I'm going to be open to whatever is decided, but I will make this observation as I have in the past. We always risk creating overtime when we have meetings in the evening. We do, you know, we're now able to zoom so anybody can participate at any time. And if they're not able to, they certainly could elect to go back and look at that on video at a later date. I'm not sure that it would increase our attendance at all, but I understand, you know, we've talked about it for some time. If someone wants to make a motion to that effect and you get support, we can take it from there. Did you want to make that in a form of a motion?
I'm trying to think of something that might be more agreeable.
What you're thinking, I agree with Bob because it work in the farm. But I should get out of here and go back and stuff at home, so.
But I should get out of here and go, go back and stuff at home, so. Just to follow that, but we're not doing it for my convenience.
And, and just to be fair, I mean, Commissioner Worsakki isn't saying it, but he's the one primarily impacted. I mean, he has to take vacation days to be, to make all these meetings that are in the morning and so, um.
But that's what I signed up for.
I know, I know you did, but if we're talking about who's being convenienced and that kind of thing, it's, it's just this way. It would continue to be Commissioner Worsakki, which is, he's willing to do that, but just know.
Is somebody willing to make a motion one way or the other? Not going to change it. We don't need a motion, right?
Need to motion to adopt the dates if we're.
I want to change.
I was saying, I don't think we've talked about the dates.
With the MAC conference coming up on April, that span, I would like that date second.
That is the legislative conference, which usually a good portion of us go to that.
Yeah.
I will note that the fall conference, it fell outside of your meeting dates this year again. And also it's at the resort again, so I'm hoping the fall conference, we can get a huge showing again.
By accepting these dates, are we in addition, accepting the times? Cause I would like to have a discussion about that.
Yeah, I think, yeah. We need to talk about all of it before this is accepted as the calendar.
Um, I do think there's an issue, uh, with our current. Our current scheduling of the, um, study session a half an hour after the meeting ends. It's very difficult for people who want to give presentations of the study session and to plan their day. To know when they need to be here and when things are going to start. And I know it's convenient, um, for us, but I do think that's a change that we need to make. And be more definitive about when the study session is going to start. We used to be, um, nine and one, and that posed, I think, for some meetings, too big of a gap. So, um, I would propose. One thirty, yeah, thirty, you're right, correct. So I, I think we need to change that time and, and make the study session start at a specific time.
I agree with you on the time. Oh, it's inconvenience if we have a short meeting, but. I prefer locked in time just for what you said. As in the past, we've had issues with being able to get here.
Or getting here and.
Already leaving. So you're proposing that we be consistent, be proposing a specific time.
I think that's open for discussion. I mean, I, I live the closest to the building, so the problem was for people who really. Didn't have time to run home. I, I, I don't know what, what works for everybody or for most. People, what gap seems to make the most sense.
I have an issue.
You have an issue?
I do not have an issue.
Oh, I was just curious. How consistent we have been as far as. Moved it back to one or twelve thirty or something like that. From the meetings in the past, and we've always been able to meet that. You know, there's been a couple of times that we go. Kevin would think we overshot what we should have, anyway.
But sometimes we talk to them.
Yeah.
What about twelve thirty? We don't think we've had any meetings go past noon. If we, if we set it at twelve thirty.
Yes, we have.
Not very many.
Not very many.
Not very many, but.
But there has been a couple. And that can be rectified during the first meeting, just put a clause in there that says time could change.
But we set it at twelve thirty and we did happen to go over a little bit. That's easier for them to make than setting it at one thirty and we're already leaving the building.
Exactly.
That's a concern.
You could just plan to have lunch every time, too.
I think that's a great idea.
Person buys.
Second.
Thanks.
It, it could look, so it could look something like, uh, you know, it starts at twelve thirty or, um. Thirty minutes after the conclusion of the first meeting. Twelve thirty or it'd be later. So let's say you entered your meeting at twelve fifteen, next meeting was started at oh forty-five. So it'd give you a chance to stretch your legs and go raid the refrigerator and.
I think that's a, a good compromise.
But we want to try to put, so what I'm hearing is, is that we would go back to the study session starting at twelve thirty. Or thirty minutes after the conclusion of the first meet of the board meeting. If it goes beyond.
Later.
Whichever's later.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Will we throw in a second too on that one meeting? Cause there's quite a gap between the eleventh.
We're just talking on the, on meeting times.
We're just doing time right now.
We're just doing the times, okay. Yeah, we can break this up any way we want, I guess. So right now we'll just focus on the start, the start times of both the morning and afternoon meetings. And what I, what I didn't hear was, did you want to go back to two study sessions a month or do you want to stay at one?
I would like to stay with one. I think it's, it's proved to be, um. Beneficial. I, I think that, um, it makes the study sessions more productive. Um, and less of an onus on administration to try and fill meeting space, um. I think it's worked.
And we had a motion on sup.
Oh.
Yep, I understand. But we're in discussion right now.
Okay.
And that would be also at the first meeting of the month. The second Tuesday of the month, we would hold that still. Currently we do it the.
Well, it's the second, you say, but it's the first.
First meeting. You move it first.
So in order to, we, we would have to change the motion.
Yeah, should I rescind my motions to encompass the whole? I rescind my motion.
Rescind the second?
Yes. Okay.
Want to give it another shot?
Um.
Remember, we're dealing only with, uh, start times and frequency of study session.
And the dates and, and the days.
Yep.
Okay, so the motion will be that, uh, Board of Commissioners will meet the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at nine o'clock. With the study session beginning at twelve thirty.
Or thirty minutes later.
Or thirty minutes later or after whichever is later.
Later of.
After the conclusion of the first meeting.
After the conclusion of the first meeting. Does that address only one study session though, or does that not have to be addressed?
Well, you're saying after the first meeting, so that would imply that there's no meeting the second, no study session, the second meeting.
And there was also a request to take April's meeting from the eighth, the second.
In addition, April's meeting will be moved from April eighth to April second.
Let me just, that's a Tuesday or you, or a Wednesday. Are you sure you want it on a Wednesday? Oh, April second is a Wednesday, April first is a Wednesday.
April Fool's Day, that'll work out good.
April's meeting will be moved from April eighth to April first.
Surprise.
Okay.
Oh, that's already on the calendar.
Hey, we need to get support for that. I'll support.
Well, can I clarify?
Oh, okay. And I'm going to ask her to read it back.
Okay.
So the motion is that the meetings, Board of Commissioners meetings will be on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Beginning at nine AM with the study session beginning at twelve thirty PM or thirty minutes after the conclusion of the. Board of Commissioners meeting, whichever is later, the April eighth meeting is moved to April first.
I think that that says there's two study sessions, so we have to add in that there's one study session somehow.
Thirty minutes after the first meeting of the month.
Something.
About, um, conclusion of the Board of Commissioners meeting, whichever is later. Regarding.
Only after the first meeting.
Only after the first.
Meeting of the month.
DOC meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting of the month.
So we are not going to add a trial for a few dates in the evening.
That's, the motion doesn't include that, no. Evan, you wanted to say something, I should.
No, I was just trying to clarify the same thing, cause I still wanted to talk a little bit more about that second meeting in the afternoon.
Okay, we're back into discussion because we have support.
Okay. I mean, I, I was just thinking, maybe, I know Gary mentioned trying it out for a trial period, but then what if we were to try? Like every other month, right? Say like February, April, June, August, and October, doing that second meeting. Like at five or five thirty. If anybody be.
I'm making it look like the wheels are turning.
I'm just concerned it would get confusing for the community.
Okay.
We have to be consistent.
Yeah. My thought would be we would pick three days, like April twenty-second, May twenty-seventh, and June twenty-fourth would be at. Five or five thirty.
Anybody want to explore that?
Don't hear it. Which, which one, I'm sorry, April?
I was thinking April twenty-second, May twenty-seventh, and June twenty-fourth. It's springtime, uh, probably less slow, snow, um, it's, it's lighter out during the evenings.
People are working more in the early evening. Sorry.
That's true.
Time of the year.
And it was mentioned earlier, and I think this still applies, still confusing because you're not inconsistent.
Correct.
Yes, that, that's true.
Better off to make a mistake and be consistent about that mistake.
Hmm.
But again, we don't, you know, we don't get a lot of attendance unless there's a subject that really has people's interest. We just don't get a lot of attendance. And I'm sure you, it won't matter what time of day we hold that meeting, if they're interested in the subject, they will be here.
Exactly right.
And the, I, I'm sorry.
Sure.
And the idea for, um, the evening time is that then people could come and actually publicly comment. Because when they just watch it over Zoom, they aren't able to actually publicly comment. And so that would be my, my thought is that that would give the public an opportunity for those who are working to publicly comment.
I have an idea. What if you try, so every year we have an annual meeting by statute, you have an annual meeting. What if the annual meeting is an evening meeting? And then you could plan on that one annual meeting and maybe people would attend that if you wanted to try a meeting. That's usually in September.
September twenty-third.
Uh, no, that would have to be the September ninth meeting, because by statute, I think it has to be at the beginning of the meeting, right? Or no, it is the twenty-third.
Yeah.
So would there be anything to preclude us in August from making that decision if we thought it would be appropriate?
No.
So we could take action on the motion that's on the floor now. And if we get to July or August and see that is appropriate, we could just make the change at a earlier meeting.
If I remember correctly, the statute says if you're going to change from your regular schedule, that you have to give, I think, ten days notice of that change. So we would just have to give extra notice to the public that you're changing the time.
And that decision in all likelihood would be made at a, a meeting either just before, a month before. It's not going to be two days before, so. I want to give an opportunity to, uh, make sure all your thoughts are being heard, but at some point in time, we do need to bring this to a vote. Oh, all right, I want to ask, uh, uh, if you're okay, we'll do a voice vote, all right? And Damian, I hate to ask you to do this again, but can you, uh, read it back?
Okay. It also too, do we need to include that we moved the November one to a Wednesday? I do have that up at the top.
It's on the calendar.
Yes, on the calendar.
Um, a motion to that the Board of Commissioners meetings will be the second and fourth Tuesday. Of the month at nine AM with the study session meeting beginning at twelve thirty PM or thirty minutes after the conclusion. Of the first Board of Commissioners meeting, whichever is later. Um, and that the April eighth meeting will be moved to April first.
All those in favor signify.
I'll support.
I already got a motion that's.
I'll just ask her to read it back, so.
Um, roll call.
Does it need to be a roll call? Thank you.
Arkey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
That work?
Yes.
Great?
Yes.
Worsakki?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Good. All right, appreciate you guys working us through that. I believe that we're moving on to then the adoption of the board rules. Do you want, Katie, you, there's been some changes based on earlier meetings. Do you want to walk us through those?
Uh, yes, so at our previous meetings, there was discussion regarding the chair term, uh, length as well as, um. I guess you could say term limits as it was put. And so in the board rules, it does incorporate a term limit of two consecutive terms. However, you can change that today because you're, uh, looking at the rules, um, but that language was added. And then there was, uh, a few other tweaks that Tammy and I made just because we found those, um, items that needed to be tweaked. Like on page four, minutes was all capital for some reason, so we fixed that. Um, the transportation authority, we added the word authority. Um, materials management advisory committee, solid waste has formally changed to that title. Uh, so most of the other ones are quite, um, just housekeeping. The big one is the, the term limit specifically, uh, for the chairperson, which was a discussion at a previous meeting. Um, other than that, the minutes are this, are the rules are the same as years previous. Our legal counsel does review these for us, um, and give the thumbs up on them as well.
And he's supposed to be the off year, so they will be reviewing them this year, correct?
I send them annually, but yes.
Right. Anybody want to make any comments? Yeah, there was one that caught my attention, but.
Going to mark that.
Yeah. I don't know how to do that either. Policy changes, you heard that part of the board rules? Where it says per diem, mine says fifty-four, five hundred and forty dollars a meeting, right?
Oh, did we add a zero on X?
Wait a minute.
The strike through, strike through is there.
Strike, yeah. So I did track changes and so sometimes when you do, like if it's just like one letter or one number, it's hard to see the track changes.
Oh, okay, now I.
But I, it, yes, the four is technically struck.
They go, boy, things are looking up.
A little more, let's have more meetings.
Right.
Um, see on that note too, where it's, um, forty, forty, eighty, and one twenty has been changed to fifty, a hundred, and one forty. I think that should be one fifty.
Oh, you're probably.
Where are you at?
I am on policy on compensation, which is.
Page eleven.
Eleven.
I'll, I'll get that changed. It was bad math that day.
Yeah. And then to be fair, I just, uh, want to note that I've had a conversation with, uh, our administrator and clerk. That there are some capitalization issues and a couple punctuation issues, which I've noted, nothing changes the content. Of the document in front of us, um, but those changes I believe will be made.
Mm-hmm. The other one I had was the services of corporate counsel will be coordinated through the. This is kind of the administrator. Board chair is not involved in that, or what am I missing? The board chair was crossed out.
So I interpret coordination as when folks contact legal counsel. The general practice is they go through our office to contact legal counsel. Um, if you're interpreting this as a different sort of coordination, I would be open to that. But in my four years here, I don't know of anyone who's asked the chair to contact Matt. They all ask me.
Normally that's probably the way it's been done. The chair's always had the authority to contact counsel. Or give the authority to board members to true contact counsel, and I don't. Like, it's a little fuzzy for me, so I don't know. Not that it gets done, but the possibility is there.
I, I have seen it done, and I think it's important that the chair have that ability.
Could we spell it out and say, or? Because I don't think it's appropriate for staff to go to the board chair to contact counsel. Staff should be coming to me, whereas Board of Commissioners would go to the chair.
I would see that as a rare exception, that the chair is not going through the administrator.
Mm-hmm.
What, regardless of whatever service provider we're using. Um, in fact, I would think that it's more of, I'm not trusting something I'm hearing.
Right.
So I want to go myself, but I agree with the group. I think that the chair, actually the chair and the vice chair, I should have the, have the authority if needed, go directly to them. But common sense would show that you'd always take everything through staff. For one thing, they need to know what's going on.
I think I'm, I think we're saying two things. So you're saying giving you to the authority to contact. But this is, to me, this is saying staff can come to you to ask if they can contact the attorney.
Yeah, no, I don't want that.
Okay, so we need to clarify that section that yes, the board has the authority if they ask the chair and the vice chair to contact legal, however. However, staff should go through my office to contact.
Yeah, for sure.
But you're saying the board has the authority, I mean, I think just the chair, we shouldn't open the door for any commissioner to go to the chair to ask permission to contact legal, and it should be the chair. If if a commissioner has an issue, they want, they would prefer the chair address rather than the administrator.
You address the chair with it, and he addresses legal counsel or chair or whoever. In the absence of the chair, those duties default to the vice chair anyway.
Okay.
Doesn't get done often, but I like the action.
Yeah. No, that's great.
Clear this up, or you might get it all confused.
So I'm interpreting of what you're saying to tweak the language to say the chair or the county administrator and that staff goes through county administration, the Board of Commissioners goes through the chair.
And I think that, I think any Board of Commissioner can, would be able to approach either the chair or the administrator if they would like, I mean.
Okay.
But I don't think that I, I think the point is the six commissioners besides the chair cannot go directly to the attorney.
Right.
They either need to go through you or the chair.
Yes. Okay.
With respect.
I almost, I think we need to add an additional sentence then, that yes, like an additional sentence. The services of corporate council through county board chair or or and the administrator by commissioners.
I think either.
Commission.
If you say and, then it's suggesting that they both have to give.
So and or the county administrator. By commissioners. And by the county administrator by for staff request. So the services of corporate council will be coordinated through the um, county board chair and or the county administrator or commissioner request. And by the county administrator for staff request.
Administrator should be able to do a commissioner request too, and take it to the board chairs, so.
Yes, it, oh. Okay.
But I think staff requests should always go through.
I think that says that. I, because it says and or county administrator. So you could still come to me and then I could get with our and say, hey, so and so is wondering about XYZ. Yeah.
With respect to staff, does that preclude then other elected officials being able to retain counsel?
No, they can retain their own counsel if they really wanted to.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to go through you to contact counsel.
Well, they do though. They always coordinate with our office.
But as an elected official, they should have the latitude to be able to go directly to counsel if they felt like they should.
They will, but I, the contract with Cole Stoker says that he's gonna loop me in after the request is made, so.
I just want to make sure that I'm not handcuffing elected officials to be able to do their job.
Yeah, no.
I mean, as an example would be if it's an HR issue, well, they're gonna probably go through HR and HR will elevate it if they have to be.
Yes, yes. And anything Matt informs us or whoever's working at Cole Stoker, because we deal with a lot of the attorneys. If any elected official is contacting them for any reason, he's running it by our office before responding typically. So that we're aware, but it doesn't really happen. Um, we really all work well together and coordinate those efforts.
All right, and I know I'm repeating myself. I just don't want us to be the obstacle to elected officials getting their job done, that's all.
No.
So we've done some work on this too. Do we need to go back and identify what we've changed in this discussion?
Um, the things that I, uh, the the three meeting per diem, I fixed it from one forty to one fifty because it was simply bad math. Um, and then we updated the coordinated corporate council. We coordinated through the county board chair and or the county administrator for commissioner requests and by the county administrator for staff request. That change was made. Uh, and then really the other stuff is pretty um, housekeeping. Uh, mileage will be authorized for attending reconvene and special county board meetings. We did notate that it's the IRS per diem standards, because that's what our policy notates, so we mirrored those there. And then uh, earlier on in the document, like I said, we did housekeeping as far as updating the different committees. Some of them were uh, have changed names like materials management from solid waste. And then when it comes to the agenda, which uh, this was something that we talked about last year, the agenda uh, order. We did add the tributes proclamations presented by board chair and the presentations. Um, because those are items that we do throughout the year that weren't technically on the agenda list. Should the agenda look different? Based on what's in here, because in here in five point one, it says what's going to be on your agenda as topics.
And the order is going to happen.
And the order is going to happen.
But we do have the latitude at the time of the agenda, approving the agenda, to move some of that around if time requires.
Yes, you can.
Chris, do you want to say something?
Yes, I um, wanted to talk about presentations where it currently is. I thought maybe you, we should look at perhaps moving that up under finance or something like that, because most presentations happen earlier, because it seems like we're always move, it's not we, the board is always moving those up because of time.
Just for clarification though, in the agenda typically it'll show what time that presentation's at.
Okay.
So even though it appears like we're jumping it ahead of something else, that agenda has already s- uh, spelled out. Someone's coming in at nine thirty, someone's coming in at ten. I don't know if it matters where the presentation then falls on the agenda. Because I think that we're already identifying that, but I'll open it up to the group for your thoughts.
We are identifying the time, which is helpful for folks when we're scheduling these people, which I I do appreciate that. Um, but for the average person potentially looking at the agenda, having it at the very bottom like that could cause confusion. Whereas the trend has been nine thirty is typically about where finance department heads falls. So we could move it up on the agenda. So from just a glance semantics for the public, they're like, oh, presentations are towards the beginning. Because if they don't look at the nine thirty, and I know we can lead a horse to water and we can't make them drink. Um, but if they're just seeing presentations at the bottom, they're assuming it's at the end of the meeting.
For purpose of this discussion, then why don't we do that? We haven't got a motion yet to accept anyway. Is there any other changes you want to bring to our attention?
Still have the time, they're supposed to even know about.
Under presentation?
Yeah.
Yes.
So are we moving it after finance? Is that what I heard, or where where do you want?
That seemed to, that was my suggestion.
It's gonna make a whole other difference.
Tim, you you wanted to weigh in on this?
I don't know.
Please.
Um, under our list of committees that we currently have, we have a liaison for nine one one central dispatch. We also have a primary still authorities and other agencies where have a central dispatch advisory. I don't know. We need both of those?
I don't think they do.
I don't think we have a liaison between us and central dispatch, so we probably remove it from there.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, the board person is a voting member on that committee, or is that we should remove it from the liaison area, because they're technically a voting member?
I I was just comparing this list to the
Yeah.
To the spreadsheet. And there's other discrepancies too.
Yes.
Like land bank authority is a liaison here on the spreadsheet, it's listed as a.
I think every year we move around these committees and every year we find another one.
Uh, land bank has never been a voting member, as far as I've been serving.
And that's under liaison, yep.
Okay, so in the other, on the spreadsheet, it probably needs to move.
Needs to move on spreadsheet, okay.
Those are the two that I.
Are there committees that were forgotten on the list that you're aware? I, we tried to compare the spreadsheet to the rules.
Um, the new water smart land conservancy committee.
And that's a voting, like you're a real member of that, not just a represent, like a liaison?
You know, they their format isn't really a voting format.
So, but you're like a member, not just like an audience liaison.
I believe that was the intention.
And that's called the
Water Smart Land Use.
Water Smart Land Use Committee, okay? Add it on the list. Anything else that's on this list that seems? What about the Point Betsy Lighthouse? Isn't that a, that's a friends group and aren't, isn't that just a, you're a liaison, not really a?
Well, I'm not, I'm I'm not the one that's representing that, but.
Yeah, exactly right.
So that needs to move up to under liaisons.
And I'm glad, Tim, that you brought this up, because as I looked at these lists of committees, I'm wondering if some of them we even need to assign anybody to, would we be better off just asking them to come in on some frequency or make presentations to us? Uh, because some of these I've sat on and quite frankly, I don't think they even care I'm there. They're really only interested is that they need something from us, just being candid about it. I'm wondering if we couldn't take them uh, some time outside of between now and the next meeting to go over all of these committees and make a proposal about which ones we should assign people to and which ones we should be asking them to come in, make quarterly reports to the commissioners as a whole. It does a number of things. It reduces the number of meetings we have to attend. Gary, in my uh, accounting of this, you know, you're doing ten plus meetings that you're assigned to a month. Uh, that's, that's a lot of meetings.
Sixteen, I think it's down to as many as.
Right, yeah, and I was just counting the ones that came right off these committees.
Need to run in my district so you can run around and talk.
So, what, does it make sense to carve out this piece of it and have a discussion at the next meeting regarding the necessity to continue on with appointments to some of these meetings?
There was a, there was one, and I can't even remember the name of it. It's still on the list and I left it on the list. I don't think we've ever met. It has nothing to do with the river.
Yeah, the natural rivers, uh, one.
Third. Thoning board that we meet once in a while.
Only when there's an issue.
Yeah, with the Betsy, there was another one in there, then I'm just thinking. Don't recall ever going or even.
So there's the natural river ZBA, that the one you're talking about?
That's the one that meets.
That one does need periodically, and that one we're required to have you on there. The National Park Service, you know, always request who's on that.
Well, it's the DNR.
And full disclosure, Katie and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about this, and I asked her to identify for me which ones by statute do we have to appoint people to, and which ones have just, over the course of time, we've just been keeping adding on. If I could get concurrence on this, I'd like to move on approving the uh, the board rules and board practices and come back to the discussion of many appointments at our next meeting.
Can we have that many appointments, be it like a tandem or appendix? So it's something that we can edit and not be part of the.
Oh, other rules themselves? I don't see why you couldn't.
But, and I think chair and the vice chair can sort out. I'll make the motion to approve what we just went through.
Board rules.
Board rules, as presented and selected.
I have a few more things.
Let's get to support and then we'll get back to you, okay? Okay, so we got a motion. Did you get that? Is there support for that motion?
I'll support that.
Evan's word, okay, now we can.
Um, on page two, it talks about form, number, bullet number two. Um, it talks about absence of forum, and so it says that um, a- and I I'm assuming this is because somebody falls ill or somebody is called away that um, there's a recess. Um, and what, um, and so, for instance, if, do we all show up even if we don't have a quorum? So.
We cannot hold a meeting without a quorum.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I assume ahead of time, we know if we're not going to have a quorum.
Yes.
It rarely happens, but there has been times where we've canceled a meeting because of that. If we're in the, if we have a quorum when the meeting starts and um, halfway through the meeting, you have a couple of people leave.
You're done.
You're done.
Yep, I understand that. So, I, right, it 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 talks about an absence of forum, so this is saying upon the absence of forum, members present may recess from time to time or a certain time. Public notices is not required if the time set for reconvening is less than one hour. All of the meeting act requirements shall be adhered to. So I guess what I'm saying, this seems to address that we're already here, we've already got quorum, and then somebody left.
Correct, yep.
What about if we just don't have quorum on a certain day? Do we all just still show up and say, oh, we don't have a quorum and go home?
So the expectation is that if you're unable to attend the meeting, you're letting Tammy and or I know. And then we would get with the chair and vice chair if there's going to be no quorum and of which then we would cancel the meeting.
Okay.
How many times you think that's happened in just the last couple of years?
Not since I've been here.
Last ten years.
I I I know, it it's, it it means it's it's nothing, but it didn't really address.
Yeah.
Right, if we don't have
Makes sense.
Forum ahead of time.
Yep.
You you'd be notified ahead of time.
And that'll frequently happen, by the way, at committee meetings where they don't have
Yeah.
where when those get canceled, but typically not at this meeting.
I I understand, I understand. Again, I I can infer that what this means is that once you're at the meeting and somebody had to leave, then this is what happens, and so, but it doesn't really address. We know we're not gonna have forum when we meet, and we were just canceled.
Yeah.
Katie, when you present this to legal counsel, will you highlight that and ask me if that needs any clarification or not?
Got it.
Good question. Anything else?
We already discussed that. Um, five point two point, five point two one on page five, talks about agenda priorities. Um, they're given priority on the basis of date and time received by the clerk. Um, how? It, there is, and maybe this isn't the the place, but there is, um, am I trying to say this? And the agenda is being set by a certain somebody or a committee, correct?
It's typically set uh, by the chair, vice chair, and a clerk administrator. In the last twelve months, we've had that rotating whether commissioners will come in and participate in the absence of either the chair or the vice chair.
So yes.
Your question?
Mm-hmm, okay, so there there is a little something more to agenda.
There is a, there is an actual agenda meeting, uh, once a month. But I think primarily, uh, the chair has attended each one.
Yep.
And then the commissioners, the other commissioners rotate. Um, it wasn't, as the chair has said, it wasn't always that way. But it it seemed to be a good practice to try last year, so all the other commissioners had an opportunity to give input, solve with the agenda scheduling process, what's like, and I think it was appreciated. Is everybody?
I think it was a waste of time.
Okay. We're gonna keep up with.
I'm glad that was brought up, because I was gonna be discussing, those things are not documented anywhere. I was gonna discuss uh, whether or not we continue with that practice. But again, it didn't need to be part of this, because it's not spelled out.
Any.
But to answer your question, historically, spend the clerk, the administrator and the chair that set the agenda. And that would be true probably for most organizations. Now, that doesn't preclude you from contacting one of them and saying, look, and I'd like to consider for the agenda. That doesn't preclude somebody from the public saying, typically they'll contact administrator or the clerk and say, I would like to be on the agenda. Not often, but it does happen.
So I I I'm, I guess I'm, I would like to see that that um, agenda meeting is somehow added. That's all right.
Agenda review you'd like to see added?
Just so.
It can be, it's just me, I don't know that it.
Been doing it for years.
I've been doing it since I've been here. Um, it wasn't done before. The only thing I would hesitate is I'd want it to have leeway, because there has been times when we haven't met because of whatever reason. And so Tammy and I. And so Tammy and I finalize the agenda and move it forward.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
And most of the time, this can be done. Phone.
Mm-hmm.
But instead of coming in here.
That's how Art's done it a few times.
So I did it when I missed.
Yeah, yep.
So I, I, I do appreciate the comment, but we have a motion and a support on the floor unless you wanna amend your motion. There, we're gonna take action on it.
Yeah, it wasn't my motion. I just do want to acknowledge, I mean, I think Commissioner Tring, um, your comments are, are valuable and that as a new commissioner. In reading through this, it doesn't guide you. So perhaps like that procedural type thing can be in our orientation packet for new commissioners. So it's clear what the process is informing the agenda. So perhaps it doesn't need to be in this document, but it should be somewhere. So you're not wondering how is that put together? It's legitimate comment, for sure.
Um, and then, um, eight point two, um, seven on page six, use of cell phones. Um, I, 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 I understand the spirit of this is, is so that, uh, we're not texting and taking calls during the meeting. But also our phones are technology that, um, we might be looking something up. On our phones, like I, I noticed, um, quite a few of you have computers. Um, maybe I have a phone. So I, I guess that distinction is that use of cell phones. Um.
I think the, the objective there is to not let your phone ring during a meeting.
Correct.
Don't do it in court either.
Right.
Just saying, it's just by out of respect, but I don't. Any reason you can't use your phone to look at the agenda or.
And, and that's all I'm saying.
As I read through this, this is specifically talking about the use of the cell phone for discussion. So we don't want you picking up phone calls in the middle of a meeting.
Correct.
It has nothing in here that precludes you from using your iPhone to do research on a statute as an example. That would be no different than if I've got my iPad and I'm doing the same thing. This, the way this is written is about using it for voice transmission.
Then do a couple of bill meetings where.
All right.
That's exciting.
Yes. Um, and then on page ten, it looks like, um, ten point four. Um, on there, um, there's. Quotes around board at the very last sentence, board's trust. I, I, I don't think that those, I, I think we can remove those quotation marks. Uh, on page twelve.
Any objection?
Oh.
Page ten, oh.
Ten point four.
Yeah, so it's.
Says boards.
Yeah.
Trust.
Point four.
It's just as accentuating it, that's all it's doing.
Yeah.
I think those.
Reason.
To remove them or add.
Remove them or leave them?
Yeah, it would be considered a breach of the board's trust. I, I don't think anybody's trying to say.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that can just be removed. Um, on page twelve, board practices. Um, number two, no one individual commissioner has any authority. It says to advise. I wonder if that maybe, um, a more correct term would be to direct government center employees. Um, instead of what to do or what not to do, maybe in their job duties.
I don't think it's our job to tell any employee.
Correct.
That's up to the department heads.
Right, I would say advise or direct about that.
Right.
Okay.
But you would do it through. The elected official, department head or something or your administrator.
This should be through me.
Do it to.
And I, now that you bring up that, it, this just says government center employees, but honestly, it should be all county employees. I assume the sheriff also doesn't want you going direct to his deputies to direct to them either, and they're not technically government center employees. So it should be county employees. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it should be all county employees, not just this buildings.
So we're removing the word advise and replacing it with?
I put advise or direct, I put bold. No one individual commissioner has any authority to advise or direct county employees. What to do or what not, what not to do. That applies to any chair of a committee. This applies to any chair of a committee.
I don't, I don't hear any dissension, go ahead.
Yeah, it, it just what to do or what not to do seemed a little kluge to me. I was thinking.
I put of what to do or what not to do. I added of, I think that could, made it flow better.
Okay. Um, and number eight, is that, is that, should, um, the board should or should that the board will? Work with administration to present motions in writing to the clerk prior to the meeting?
So that was one that's been added since I've been here. Um, you guys used to do a lot of motions on the fly and now I write motions out for Tammy. Um, so that could be tweaked anyway. The process is, staff gives agenda items to me, or if they give them to Tammy, she gives them to me. And then our office, uh, does like a cover memo, which is an overview of the item, and then we prepare a proposed motion for the board to consider reading. So that's the process.
Okay.
So I, I, I agree. I thought to myself, I'd like the fact that we have motions prepared. Uh, because I think it helps the clerk, it helps clarity. I have oftentimes wondered, does it look like then we're already predisposed? To what the outcome of that's gonna be, and sometimes you've given us multiple choices. I think a good reason to leave it as, um, that it's not a directive that it has to be done, but. Uh, it could be.
Would you like, well, should it say may work or leave it as shouldn't work?
I, I'm thinking should work.
Okay.
Again, that way the public could see that's not baked in.
Right.
I mean, that motion could change and sometimes does.
Yeah, it does.
And then number fourteen says all policies adopted by the board are binding on the board. Binding on the board.
Mm-hmm.
So that means that everything that we adopt binds us.
Yeah, and if you wanna. Go outside that, as it's happened. Need to suspend the board rules and go from there. And that, that's a procedure that. They collect it off and on, but I like that. We're gonna make rules, we need to be.
Following them.
Accountable to the rule.
I, I guess it was, it, it, to, to me, this is more grammatical maybe, so I'll let it go.
What would you rather have it say?
Opposites are bind, um. Uh, maybe the, the board is bound by all policies adopted by the board?
It's workable.
Say that one more time, please.
Yes, the board is bound by all policies adopted by the board.
It says the same way, it says the same thing, but it's a better way of saying it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Want to get two way to finish?
And maybe I'm being nitpicky, I have no.
You know, and I reported to an English, uh, someone English major once, this just happened to me all the time. Except my response was, would you focus on the content and forget about the presentation? Now, you, I appreciate the fact that you came ready today, Kristy. Please, are you done, Kristy?
I am now, yes.
Everything I. I have besides, um, the capitalization issue and a couple of commas, I do want to mention two things because it would change a word and eliminate three words in the document. Um, I believe we decided at one point on page one, under speaking time, the third sentence uses the term chairman. I think we agreed at one point that that should not be the term used. We could have a female chairperson at some point in time. Um, so I think we were gonna use chair throughout the document, um, and it's used more than once, so that needs to be changed, I believe. And then under. On page four, at the very last sentence, under parliamentarian. It says the county clerk of the county shall advise the chair, I believe of the county should be removed.
Mm-hmm.
Chairman is fixed.
There's more than one.
Can you point, can you direct us specifically to which?
Yes, page four, the very last sentence or the very last. It is parliamentarian and it reads the county clerk of the county shall advise. I believe it should just be the county clerk shall advise the chair.
Yeah, Tammy's, I'm just making sure Tammy got it.
Oh, no, I gave her copies.
Oh, okay.
I'm standing at that, we're talking too.
Quick comments, appreciate the fact everybody came in prepared. Anything else? So we have a motion with support. We need to do this on roll call?
Yeah. Nine?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
This is for the board rules, just so you know.
That's right.
Um, sour?
Yeah.
Greg?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, let, can we let the record reflect that we're gonna come back at our next meeting and discuss committee appointments?
You have a section for that too.
We're not there, yeah.
Well, I'm talking about whether we're gonna, when we approved the board rules, that was included in with the board rules. I had asked that we take that out to act on separately at another meeting. And I just want to make sure the minutes reflect that.
My thought is to bring committees next week if we're able to. On that agenda.
Okay, yeah, understood.
Got it.
Yeah, we've given people plenty of time to prepare.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so now we're under approval of the public comment. There enough?
Commissioner and I gave me a, a sheet that there's some grammatical errors on there.
All right, so we'll note that some grammatical changes to it, but substantively, is there any changes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve as presented.
No move.
Second.
One more bite at the apple? Roll call?
Roll offs?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nine?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So we have items regarding, uh. Committee appointments. We've already agreed that we're gonna address that at the next meeting. So then we'll move to, uh, resolutions.
Can I interject? I'm sorry, Chair. Uh, so before I came, the, um, just the chair would decide on the appointments. Since I've been here, it's been the chair, vice chair and myself sat down and kind of go through the appointments. How do you wanna handle that this year?
Well, actually, I'd like to spend a few minutes with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, with the vice chair.
Okay, yep.
Discuss those things.
After the meeting is?
Hey, so you have some resolu. Pardon me?
Be nice to have it completed and if you want to eliminate stuff and do that at the next. Well, you. There's stuff coming up.
Uh, well, as we've done in the past, continue with your assignments. Um, until there's been a change and, uh, and again, we're gonna address those. You have no assignments right now?
Do I take?
So just stand down.
Okay, would have Karen's.
That's not an automatic.
No, she would have it till you do it.
That's, okay, we can do it that way, sure.
Cause that's the way it's been done in the past.
So if you want to take a look at what Karen was responsible for.
Okay.
Feel free, but we're meeting in a week, so you, we're gonna be addressing this pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna meet today and then next week at the meeting, the intent would be to make it formal.
Okay.
And there's two things I'd like to accomplish next week. One is reviewing the need to continue a certain committees. Is there anything that needs to be added? Um, and then the assignments themselves. Two weeks ago, the administrator gave us all this as a task, so I'm hopeful that. You've already got it done and maybe even submitted already. If you can leave it today with, uh, Katie, if you want. Uh, if you already have it done, and then that'll move the process, uh, even more quickly.
Mm-hmm. I.
Find there's gonna be available for a half hour.
I am.
All right, so then we are moving on to the resolutions.
So the first, uh, resolution is to officially, um, set the chair term to one year. Because by statute, it is an automatic two. Um, as we discussed at the last meeting, it was simply in the board rules, but we could not find record of a resolution. And so we're putting a formal resolution in place. This resolution did come from our legal counsel.
I've been advised, by the way, that these resolutions have to be read into the record.
News to me.
Just tell him.
And let's get an opinion from our legal counsel here.
Yeah, we can do that.
In the absence of that, we'll just continue with the format we've used in the past until we get a legal opinion. We started to figure.
Yeah, as long as I don't have to read the whole thing, I'll make the motion that we.
We're gonna suspend that.
That we adopt twenty five oh one, the election of board chair.
I second.
Get that? Do we have that on a roll call?
Yep. Sour?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Nine?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero two ACH. Someone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Looking for support?
I second.
Nine seconds? There's no comments or, uh, questions? We'll take roll call.
Greg?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nine?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Question sent.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five zero zero three.
Thank you, Bob. Second. Second. Get that? Roll call, please.
Or Saki?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Nine?